Of the Asylum Springs Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 9, 2004. Roll call, please.
Song. T. Williams.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith. Renard.
Here.
Kaye Williams.
Here.
Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the minutes for the agenda for tonight is the minutes from last meeting. Commissioners, you've all been presented with a copy of the minutes. Are there any questions or comments? If there are none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting June 11, 2024?
So moved.
I can.
Roll call, please.
T. Williams.
Here. Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Renard.
Yes.
Kaye Williams.
Yes. Minutes are approved. First up on the agenda, rezoning development permit, RZ 2406. Looks like Ben, that is you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. So for this presentation, I'm going to be presenting both E1 and E2 on today's agenda because they're both at the same address. But what we're looking at is a rezoning and plumery plat development permit for Crime Development LLC. It's at 23006 Lawless Road. The request is to rezone that Phase 3 and plumery plat, that same phase of the Lawless Ranch addition. That's 16.4 acres. The rezoning is going from our 3 residential 2-family to a planned development zone. And that would accomplish creating 88 single-family attached lots, which I'm going to explain that in a second. So here you see the future land use map that we show for all the rezoning requests. It shows as neighborhood 1s. That fits with duplex as well as single-family attached. As you can see, that same land use exists throughout the Lawless Ranch subdivision. And here is the site plan that was presented. One notable feature is a park that is provided. Wrong pin. Park that's right there. That was not part of the original subdivision some years ago, but that is included now. Another thing that you notice is that the lots are a little bit narrower than normal, and I will show you a little blow up of that. So to explain this, they're sized just like a duplex lot. But they're providing a new lot line that runs in the middle of the lot. And so what will happen is the building will be put right in the middle of the lot line as I'm drawing there. We have units on either side, and that's done so they can just sell them separately. Presently, what's happened with the earlier phases is that the duplexes are built on one lot, and they have difficulty selling one, like the A side, separate from the B side. There are ways to do that, but it's much cleaner if they just have a separate lot. So that's what they're proposing. The look of this will be pretty much just like a duplex. But the only difference is that there's that lot line running down the middle of the unit. So because in order to accomplish that, they're requesting the PD Zone District, and that was just selected because it allows the most flexibility with the lot standards that would allow for them to do something like this, because there's not really anything in our codes that fits perfectly with that type of request. So as you can see there, they're requesting the PD standards are on the left. That comes in automatically, the PD Zone. And then with the customization, you have that on the right side. One thing to point out is, you know, we have the 3,500 square foot lots. That's for one unit. Lot width is down to 35 feet. Again, that's just so that they can split it in half. And then the lot coverage has upped significantly into 65, and that's also because the lots are smaller. The setbacks in terms of the front will pretty be pretty much just like the regular subdivision. But then you have the zero-feet interior side for where the unit would bump up to the lot line for the other side. And then the exterior side would be eight feet, which is standard, and then 25 in the rear. And then the rest of this is pretty much self-explanatory. Here you have the layout of the subdivision. The park is going to be roughly right where the existing farmhouse is in that area. Staff is recommending approval with stated condition in the staff report that obviously the rezoning needs to be approved before they're allowed to do any type of construction with the subdivision. And with that, we're available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Sir, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Michael Piazza. I live at 3016 Don Hill Road. And we're attached to the back of this. The house is 53 feet from the property line, so most of my eight acres is in my front yard. One thing I'm concerned about is the drainage. What are we going to do for the drainage of this? We currently already have issues over there. And then the noise level would be a drastic change from where we are currently. And then, of course, I'm concerned with property value. You know, I got over half a million dollars into this plus, and you know, I don't want anything. You know, I wouldn't want a million-dollar home right behind me, more or less, anything else. And yeah, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, sir. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Aaron Lewis, 3700 Kenwood. I don't know where this, I barely know where Lawless is, but from a standpoint of utilities, I put in for gas company, Black Hills. And the only thing I see is all the utilities, they put all their stuff right on the lot lines. So there might be some interference with the utility companies. Electric meters go right there on, it looks like the utilities end up right in driveways. Might be something to look at, because I know when, you know, we put meters, we put meters at the house, but the other utilities turn up, especially the electric company, they just write on the pin. There's something to look at.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners?
Ben? Is this in the city? Okay. I couldn't recall if that was right on the edge of the... Or if it was just in our planning area.
Mr. Vice Chair, I think right now we're just looking at rezoning in this first part. And then perhaps if we consider, if we agree that this is okay to rezone this, to have duplex at each side can be sold separately, then we would look at the next part of that and at drainage issues if they're part of it.
Yes. Are there any other comments on the rezoning? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the rezoning development permit, RZ 24-06, with staff recommendations.
Second?
I can.
Roll call, please.
T. Williams.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Renard.
Yes.
Kaye Williams.
Yes. Motion passes. This will go before the board on August 6, 2024. Moving to the preliminary plat development, same piece of property. Kevin, can you address the concerns with the water drainage?
Absolutely. Kevin Moore, City Engineer. So looking at that property, thankfully, the homeowner had reached out and provided a letter with some of the issues that they were seeing. Particularly with Lawless Ranch, it is lower than this owner's property, so they won't see any changes with the proposal of this subdivision. The issues that they're facing seem to be more on the Don Hill and Oak Crest side, coming from the north and from the east.
And will this increase those issues? Will this help those issues?
This won't change those issues in any way.
Commissioners?
I do think with, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm sorry. I do think with the challenges people are having with purchasing homes and the prices, that for especially some of our senior folks, being able to buy one half of this lot with, basically it's duplex, but you can own each one, so it's two single-family houses, one that's said and done. But the price will be significantly lower, so if there isn't an impact to the surrounding areas, it may be really beneficial to people trying to buy their first home or downsize into a home that's more suitable as they get older.
Kevin or Ben, I don't know who would address this, but any concerns about the utilities, as Mr. Lewis has mentioned, on the lot lines?
Mr. Vice Chair. Wow, that was loud. Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chris Paxton, I'm the Community Development Director. This does go through an additional, the review process with Black Hills with respect to the individual that states that he works for Black Hills. That is not an official standpoint of Black Hills Energy, and they will have an opportunity to review this to ensure that it meets all the requirements.
That includes the electric department, too.
That's correct.
Anyone else?
Mr. Piazza, I understand your concern about noise. You know, you live out in the country, right? And there're not a lot of houses around you, and I understand that. But with all of the growth, if somebody buys that land and owns that land and chooses to put property on that land, then that's their right, right? And with that, I completely empathize with you. I wouldn't want it either. But I hope you understand from our standpoint that when someone buys it and chooses to build on it, if they meet all of the city's requirements, it's unfortunate for you, and I do empathize with you, but you know, it's just unfortunately part of growth, right? I just didn't want you to think we're ignoring that part, but...
Any other comments?
I think I'm with Katie. I'd like to see, I think this price point will allow some people to get into the market that we haven't seen have access to housing, so I would move approval for PP 24-02.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Renard?
Yes.
Excuse me, let's do that again, please. McKinney?
Yes.
Renard?
Yes.
Kaye Williams?
Yes.
T. Williams?
Yes.
And Sally?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. This will go before the board on August 6, 2024. Next up, preliminary plat development permit, PP 2401. Back to you, Ben. What was that that you say, the Ben Rhodes Show?
Yes, you get to see a lot of me today. So this is another plumery plat. We're a different part of town now. This is at the 3,500 block of East Kenwood Street, south side of town. This is just to the west of Timothy Street. If Timothy was to keep going straight all the way down to Kenwood. They're developing what's called the Spring Hills subdivision, consisting of 42 single-family residential lots. One of those lots, additional lot would be an open space lot, not for development. And then two lots for multifamily townhomes, a total of 26.3 acres. And on a side note, this was recently rezoned. You might recall that you looked at the PD and the R2, I think within the last couple of months. So here is the site plan. You're looking, so everything's been flipped to the side. That's just how we could get it to fit on the screen better. So north is to the left, not up. So Kenwood be, Kenwood Street would be on the right side. And we have some notable things. This is actually an extension of Simon Sager, so there'll be, still be a gap. So where the Jiffy Lube store is, that Simon Sager Ave actually does go a bit south there, but then cuts to the end of that lot. Then there'll be a vacant segment, and then eventually it will tie in with the end of this street. So once that little segment gets done, then there'll be a continuation of Simon Sager all the way from Kenwood up to Talakewa once you cross Highway 412. So this is going to get a big chunk of that done. We have detention that's over here on the, give me my orientation here, on the east side. And then the townhome lots would be on the far east part of the property. And then this, of course, is the Timothy Street continuing all the way down, and then ties into the new Simon Sager, and then into Kenwood with one intersection at Kenwood, rather than two for Timothy and Sager. The subdivision is broken out in multiple phases, so just be aware of that. So what that means is we'll be getting final plats in phased format. Once they complete that first phase, they'll come back with a final plat, so they'll be, those will be coming forward. If they're changed, of course, these will go before the commission. If they're not changed and identical, then they'll go directly to the Board of Directors for review. And then lastly, we have the side here that shows the property. I would like to point out that there is a power line easement running through there. That's for a SWIPCo line, not roughly, is kind of where the dividing line is for the PD versus the R2 sections for the zoning. Staff is recommending approval with two needed conditions. The applicant must construct a detention pond prior to the final plat acceptance. This is, this is so it corresponds with each of the proposed phases. So we're not getting too far ahead with phasing without the pond being done to deal drainage for each of the respective phases. The second condition is dedicated additional easements that are needed prior to final plat. And these will be directed by the city engineer. I understand those are for proper access to the detention area that we would not have otherwise. With that, staff is available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Aaron Lewis, 3700 Kenwood. I just kind of, I missed where the ponds, detention ponds might be on there.
Ben, can you show that on the screen again?
I know, just like everywhere else in Asylum, water's a bad problem. And currently, the subdivision just to the east of that, when it got approved, they've got two big ponds, and they dump to the west. They already currently dump onto that property. So every time they're overflowing, they're flowing onto that property on the east side, so...
So the ponds basically are going to run under, would you say, Kevin? The ponds, are they going to run under the SWIPCo?
Yes, the proposed pond for the subdivision would be in that easement.
Okay.
Almost the full length of, correct, entire subdivision.
And currently, that subdivision on the east side there, is there any way to get, like, I work in the, you know, a lot of subdivisions have no parking on the streets. It's kind of a hassle, and I've talked to the fire guy, duh. The fire chief didn't really call me back yet today, but when they, they're down there all the time responding stuff, and they're having to dodge and weave traffic cars, and it's hard when we're going down through there, going to 412. It's one at a time. You have to switch sides. There's children running back and forth.
Right. That would have to be something that would have to go through the board with an ordinance. So that might be something you bring before the city board at the board meeting, maybe during a public comment.
Yeah.
Portion.
Yeah, it'd be nice, you know, keep some of these streets open. I mean, like where I live, I can't park on Kenwood.
I understand what you're saying, and that, it's just not something that we handle right here. That would be a city ordinance issue.
Yeah, and a lot of them vehicles broke down. They've been broke down for months, so. Thank you.
Understand. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Commissioners, any comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion for preliminary plat development permit, PP 2401.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve PP 2401, subject to staff conditions.
Have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Renard?
Yes.
Kaye Williams?
Yes.
T. Williams?
Yes.
C. Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Significant Development Permit, SD 2404. Staff is requesting to table this, oh, sorry. That one passed. Will go before the board on August 6, 2024. Significant Development Permit, SD 2404, staff's request to table this to August 13, 2024, Planning Commission meeting. Ben, do you need to comment on that, any? It was in our report on the reasons for that. Did anybody, Commissioners, have any questions or comments? I have a motion to table.
So moved.
Second?
I can.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Renard?
Yes.
Kaye Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is tabled to the Planning Commission meeting, August 13, 2024. Next up, Significant Development Permit, SD 2405, Megan.
Thank you. Megan Thomas, Planner 1. This is a significant development request located at 15303 Highway 59. The applicant is requesting to construct three new self-storage buildings, consisting of a total of 19,800 square feet. This is the site of the existing Highway 59 storage facility. The proposal is to finish out the interior of that development. This is a 2021 site plan that was previously approved and constructed. As you can see, the interior area here was left blank for future development. And this is a proposal that you're reviewing tonight. As you can see, they're proposing to construct three new buildings right there in the center of the lot. Additional parking has been provided to serve these additional buildings. And landscaping is existing, so we did not review that as part of this request. And this is the architectural elevation for the new structures. And this is the overall site view for the property. Staff has not received any calls or correspondence on this request. And staff is recommending approval with one condition as stated in your staff report. Staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? If not, commissioners? Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move approval, Significant Development Permit, 24-05, with staff stated conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
T. Williams?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Renard?
Yes.
Kaye Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. This will go to the board on August 6, 2024. This will go to the board on August 6, 2024. Next up, Final Plat Development Permit, FPC 24-03, Megan.
Thank you, Megan Thomas Planner 1 again. This is a final plat request for property located at 3201 and 3203 East Kenwood Street. The applicant is requesting to final plat Phase 3 of the Somerset subdivision, consisting of six single-family residential lots situated on 1.3 acres. All infrastructure is existing, therefore this request did not have to go through preliminary plat review, and it's just being reviewed as a final plat. This is the proposed Somerset Phase 3 final plat. Again, the request does not include any new infrastructure. They're just going to use what's existing out there from the previously approved phases of the subdivision. The proposed lot sizes are consistent with the existing lots within Phase 1 and Phase 2. Lots 99 and 101 shown to the north here will have access onto East Ricky Drive. And the southern lots 103 and 104 on the south portion of these two lots there, will have a shared drive onto East Kenwood per the plat note number 6 that's on this final plat. That plat note was requested in order to lessen the amount of drives on East Kenwood, so you'll only have two instead of three on there. And this is the overall site view of the property. There is an associated annexation request, so you might see on here, this is outside of city limits currently. They're requesting R2 residential medium for that, and that will be heard at the July 16 Board of Directors meeting. Staff has not received any calls or correspondence on this request, and staff is recommending approval with three conditions as stated in the staff report. Staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Are there any questions or comments from the audience regarding the Final Plat Development Permit, FPC 2403? If not, commissioners, any questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Final Plat Development Permit, FPC 2403, subject to staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
T. Williams?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Renard?
Yes.
Kaye Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. This will go before the board on August 6, 2024. Next up, Annexation Zoning Ordinance Regarding 2024 Election Annexation Area. Ben?
Yes, excuse me, thank you again, Mr. Vice Chairman. So before the commission is a follow-up matter to the recent annexation proposal that you considered in May. This is currently on track to be approved at the Board of Directors for inclusion for the 2024 election ballot. That ordinance, the one that's currently at the board, is a single-topic ordinance, which means that it did not address additional matters such as zoning or voting wards or things of that nature. The current item for your consideration is a zoning ordinance to zone the full annexation area to A1 agricultural default zone. If it is, if it's not selected, would, would have come in as R2. So we were wanting the A1 to be a better, you know, fit for that area when we were reviewing the, the land uses. It's primary agricultural, as you, as you all would know. And so A1 would be a natural fit for that as a placeholder matter. So I got ahead of myself on the notes. But yeah, so individual and landowners may come to the city at a later point to rezone the property, as you would see from time to time. Also, the city could come up with a follow-up ordinance to kind of clean up some of these areas if there are some properties that are just egregiously do not fit within the A1. We would come back and just request to get those rezoned. If there are any, well, let me go back to, to this slide here. So this is the A1 agricultural standards. So this is what would be the rules, if you will, that would be applied to the area. What I would say is that if there are any properties that don't quite fit with this, they'd be considered grandfathered in or legal non-conforming, which basically means that they're permitted to continue using the, the use as it is today, even if it doesn't quite fit with the A1. They just can't expand on a non-conformity or something of that nature. So usually, if there's a, a development plan or something that would, wouldn't fit with the A1, then they would come in and rezone at that time if we hadn't already gone in and rezoned them at that point. We won't be issuing any citations or anything like that for non-compliance within the A1. And that was some of the concern with some of the annex areas, whether code enforcement would come in and start issuing tickets or that we're not going to be doing anything like that for non-compliance of A1 because it's, as I would state, the, the properties that don't fit would just be grandfathered in. If recommended for approval, this would be immediately forwarded to next week's Board of Directors meeting. So you know, it's the July 18 on there, not the August 6. And that's so it can coincide with the third reading of the annexation ordinance. And another housekeeping matter is that this ordinance is written in such a way that it will go into effect unless the annexation is approved by the voters. If it's not approved, the ordinance self-destructs. It basically has a null, a void section in there that would null out the ordinance if, if the annexation isn't approved. So with that, staff is available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions or comments from the audience? If not, commissioners?
Ben, am I understanding this correctly? It says the minimum lot size is three acres. But there are a number of lot sizes that are outside the city limits now that are one and two acres or less. How is that going to affect those, whether it's previous instruction on those lots?
Yeah, Ben Rhodes again, yeah. So those will be grandfathered in. So anything that doesn't fit will be grandfathered in, yep.
On the generalized rezoning that would occur, should this happen down the road, 2025 or whenever, would that, would that be done proactively by the city by identifying properties that are non-conforming to A1?
I believe we would, we had talked internally about that of potentially coming back with an ordinance to, you know, the city would come out and, and rezone based off of land use, but we haven't really gotten that far. It would be a bit of a task to do that, to be honest with you, because you have to get all the different legal descriptions for every single property. So it could be a bit of time before that comes to pass. But I believe that's something that we would probably be looking into. Chris, did you have anything else to add on that?
No, I think that's, that's correct.
I appreciate the conversation happening now. I think that's a good thought, and I like bringing this in at A1. I think it makes the most sense.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I also think that part of the desire going through the workshops was to make sure there was also a rate, an agricultural electric rate. So zoning these things in this way sets us up for a way to, to make it more amenable to the people that are in that area that if the annexation passes.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a, can I have a motion for approval of the Annexation Zoning Ordinance, 2024 Election Annexation Area Rezone From Unincorporated To A1?
Mr. Vice Chairman, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Kaye Williams?
Yes.
T. Williams?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Renard?
Yes.
Thank you.
This will go before the board at the next board meeting, July 18, 2024. Next up, easements. Megan?
Thank you, Megan Thomas Planner 1 again. So you have a few easements that you're accepting. We have these two, a lot line adjustment, lot consolidation. You're just accepting easements in right of way on these. And then I have this last one, which this is just dedicating easements. Any questions?
If there's no questions, do I have a motion for approval and acceptance of easements?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please. She's back.
Right back.
Thought Ben was going to have to do it.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Renard?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kaye Williams? Thank you. And T. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did that cover the board and staff-approved permits, too?
That list actually has some extra things on it. But do you guys have any questions on anything on that list?
Commissioners, any questions on those? We don't have to vote on the board and staff, that's right. Okay, very good. Commissioner Renard, you had a comment?
Mr. Vice Chairman, just one housekeeping item on the presentation and also on the agenda. Kreen is spelled two ways. It is actually K-R-E-I-N, and it's spelled, the Kreen development is not spelled the same way. Just to make sure when we get to all the approvals and everything, that those corrections are made. And that's RZ 2406, RZ 2402, and PP 2402.
Very good. With that, I will accept a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?